All right, welcome everyone to our program for September. This is our candidate forum for the upcoming county board and school board elections. We are really glad to have you with us tonight. We've missed you over the summer and we're excited to be back with you here for our 2021 to 2022 program year. My name is Hannah Danen Felser and I am the Chair of the Arlington Committee of 100 and I'm going to be your moderator for this evening. You'll notice that we have extended the program from our usual hour to about an hour and a half in order to accommodate both elections. If you're watching us on Facebook Live and you think this is something your friends would like to hear, please consider sharing the Facebook Live to your page. To stay in touch with us, we would love it if you would like and follow our Facebook page. We publish our events through email announcements and we also put up a Facebook event and we would love to have you keep on joining us all year round. For those of you who are newly joining us this evening, I just want to introduce you to the Arlington Committee of 100. We are an all volunteer organization with a mission to foster open and vigorous discussion of timely community issues. We are very focused on providing nonpartisan information on the issues of the day to community members and community leaders. So thank you all for being here. I hope many of you saw our announcement that went out recently about our upcoming plans for this program year. I know every organization that remotely touches events is getting these questions. Our board has decided to keep our programs virtual over Zoom through December and reevaluate our plans at that point. Eventually, we do hope to have a hybrid format where we can all be together, but you can just as easily tune in from home. We're going to keep you updated as we monitor conditions throughout the program year. So please stay tuned to our email list. If you are with us in Zoom here today, you will be on our email list. You will receive future messages and updates. You may also be wondering why we are kicking off another year and you are listening to me. For those of you who are dying for someone else, that is very unfortunate. The board has asked me to continue on as Chair for a second year and I am very excited to be back with you to kick off this program year. So as we get into our program, I want to make sure you're all aware of some important election dates over the next few months. They are September 17th, which is the beginning of in-person voting, October 12th, which is the deadline to register, confirm, or update your voter registration, October 30th, which is the last day of in-person voting, and of course, November 2nd, which is Election Day from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Also, just to note, if you're voting from home, the deadline to apply for a ballot is Friday, October 22nd. In order for your vote to be counted, it must be postmarked by November 2nd. Again, I'm going to say that one again because I know it's not on the screen. If you're voting from home, the deadline to apply for a ballot is Friday, October 22nd, and it must be postmarked by November 2nd. I do want to thank and welcome the elected officials who have registered to be with us today. Delegate Patrick Hope is here. Arlington County Board Chair Matt DeFeranti, County Board Member Libby Garvey, and County Board Member Takis Karantonis, who is here as one of the members of our forum. I will just say that was based on our registration list before. If one of our elected officials has joined in with us since we started, please shoot us a little note in the chat and I would like to welcome you and thank you, thank you for being here. To everyone, please go ahead and mark your calendars for our next program, which is going to be on October 13th at 7:00 p.m. The official title and description are forthcoming, so watch your inbox. But since you're here tonight, you get a sneak preview. We're going to be discussing the future of relationships between Arlington Public Schools and the Arlington County Police Department now that there will no longer be school resource officers. We currently have confirmed Barbara Cannonan, the School Board Chair, and Wayne Vincent, who is the Deputy Chief of Police, and his focus is on community engagement. We have one more panelist we're working to confirm, so stay tuned. Though all of those panelists will be included in invitation. If you check your chat right now, the registration is in your Zoom, so I encourage you to go ahead and sign up and mark your calendars. So for what you're in for tonight, we are going to kick off with the School Board Forum and then once that concludes, we're going to lead into the County Board Candidate Forum. For the School Board, we did receive a RSVP from candidate Mary Kedera, but we did not receive a RSVP to our invitation to Major Mike Webb. So we are going to go ahead and go forward with just Mary for this evening. So we are going to give her three minutes to give her opening statement and then I'm going to move on to Q and A from the audience. She's going to have two minutes to respond to each question. As we wrap up the questions, I'm going to prompt Mary to give her two-minute closing statement. From there, we will move on to the County Board Forum. I am going to just go ahead and share the County Board Forum rules with you right now. Our four county board candidates vying for the title of County Board Member are Takis Karantonis, who is a Democrat and the incumbent, Mike Cantwell, an independent, Audrey Clement, an independent, Adam Theo, an independent. And they are going to start with three-minute opening statements. We will move to a Q and A. For the questions from the audience that are posed to all of the candidates, they're going to have two minutes to respond. We are going to rotate that order throughout the Q and A portion. For questions from the audience that are directed at one or two particular candidates, I think we have someone who, please mute if you are still, if someone is speaking now. If there is a question that is directed at just one or two of the candidates, we will give all the candidates the option to answer, but everyone will have one minute. Throughout the Q and A, if one candidate references another candidate in their response, I do have some discretion to give that candidate the opportunity to have one minute to respond. As we get to the end of the evening, our county board members will also have two minutes to give their closing remarks and we're going to go in the order that is opposite of the opening remarks, just to keep everything fair. So I do want to go ahead and thank our Program Committee, which is led by Delegate Patrick Hope and Jerry Laporte. Our Program Committee brings together some of the most civically engaged people you'll find around town and has excellent discussions to plan these monthly programs. This month's program was put together by our Board Member John Beistat, who led the charge in recruiting and coordinating with our candidates. So thank you very much, John. So those of you who have been with us, you know how this works. Please stick your questions in the Q and A box in the bottom of Zoom. If you are in Facebook Live, we are just taking questions from Zoom, so you're going to want to jump over in to Zoom. So enter in that Q and A box and we will not, we very likely will not get to all the questions. That is always the challenge of these programs. We never make it to all the questions. We'll get to as many as possible. All right. Scott, would you switch to that next slide that I think has a screenshot? Yeah, take a look at that screenshot that shows you what that Q and A button looks like. All right, Mary, I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to you. I'm going to stop talking. You will, I'm going to tell all the candidates, I'm going to be very firm in timing. I will speak over you when we, I'm going to, you will hear my timer go off and I will speak over you to say time and I will be aggressive and as politely aggressive as I can be to cut you off. So Mary, be forewarned. I want to keep this clear to everyone. So go ahead, Mary, you're on.
Thank you so much, Hannah, and I want to thank John and the Program Committee also for organizing this forum. I really appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself and talk with you today about the School Board race. First of all, I hope that we can all just take a moment and celebrate the fact that our schools are in fact fully open five days a week for the first time since March 2020. I am the parent of a Kenmore Middle School student and a Yorktown High School freshman and I can tell you that in my house, we are so happy to get back to school five days a week and reconnect with classmates and feel like a real part of a school community again. But saying that doesn't mean mission accomplished. In fact, there's lots to do to ensure that we will have a strong and successful school year. That includes keeping our kids in school by remaining vigilant with our safety protocols and doing everything we can to slow the community spread of COVID. It involves fixing problems with the rocky rollout of our virtual learning program last week and addressing our staffing shortage, a shortage that other districts across the country are feeling as well. We also need to make sure we're supporting our students' mental, physical, and social-emotional well-being as we welcome them back, taking the time to get them on firm footing so that we can identify and tackle the unfinished learning that many students experienced over the past 18 months. Longer term, we need to make sure that we're doing everything in our power to graduate college and career-ready young people who will prosper and thrive in their adult lives. We have to make changes in our system so that it works for every child. Like other school systems across the country, there are longstanding inequities along race and class lines that the pandemic laid bare. In our schools, that affects who can read and who can't, who gets identified as gifted or disabled and who doesn't, who gets suspended or referred to law enforcement, and which families APS listens to. In my work, I've been really excited to see how many states and school districts are using the pandemic as an opportunity, not just to reopen schools, but to reimagine them. And I know we can do this in Arlington as well. I know this because for more than 25 years, I've worked in K-12 education. I began my career as a high school teacher of English and Biology in Virginia's public schools. Later, I joined the staff of PBS in the very early days of the internet to create some of the first online programs and services for teachers and students. And I worked my way up to lead PBS's National Education Division. I left PBS when my first child was born and since then, I've been working with a variety of local and national education nonprofits where I've helped them analyze and advocate for good education policy and launch and improve programs for educators and students. And now I want to bring what I know and what I've seen across the country to serve my local community as a member of Arlington School Board. If you believe that our students, staff, and families deserve a leader with my depth of experience, then I really hope I'll have your vote in November. Thank you.
You were right on time, Mary. Thank you very much. Okay, so for each of these questions, I'm going to give you two minutes to answer. I suspect you'll often wrap up earlier than that, but if you hit the two-minute mark, I'm going to go ahead and cut you off. So. All right, so to start off, we have a question from John. What specific ideas do you have for improving the schools and county collaboration? How can the School Board and the County Board and their respective departments work more closely together to save tax dollars and become more efficient?
I think that's a great question and thank you for that. The areas that I have been interested in and that I've talked with, talked with some of our citizens about include areas, transportation is a big one. So I'm thinking about the amount of funding that goes to our school bus fleet and the example that is set for us by other districts nearby who are capitalizing on existing public transit infrastructure, specifically for middle and high school students, where leveraging that public transit infrastructure can be a life skill that's really important to learn and can boost ridership and where ridership of things like art buses may not be where we want it to be. So it helps, it helps that system and it helps the school system by differing some of its transportation costs. That would be one area where I'd like to see collaboration. I'd like to see increased collaboration around the Community Energy Plan. I'd like to see the school systems be contributing and explicitly referenced in our targets to be a carbon-neutral community by 2050. And I think as we look at our capital improvement strategies in the school system, looking at things like expanded solar infrastructure makes a lot of sense. I think that areas where we have maybe not provided the safety net in our county where we could include things like childcare for early childhood. We know that there are families, both locally and nationally, that are not being served by VPI and Head Start, but yet have a real need for quality early childhood care and preschool services. I'd like to see improved collaboration around connectivity for our families and students. And then, you know, the one that I think is on everybody's minds is thinking about growth and the future of the county and coordinated planning. I'm really excited by examples that I see across the country of mixed-use kinds of development where county and school facilities can be co-located and the ways that we could then turn that into really exciting internship and externship opportunities for our students. And I think there's a lot more creative thinking that we can do around that.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, Nancy asks, "Parents of many Arlington students do not speak English. What would you do to reach out to those parents?"
This is a topic that is fresh on my mind because I had a lengthy conversation last week with leaders of, there's a committee in Arlington called the Superintendent's Advisory Council for Immigrant and Refugee Student Concerns. And this is a group that is explicitly dealing with immigrant and refugee families, many of whom do not have English-speaking parents in the home. And I know that that, that group is larger than immigrant and refugee families specifically, but in the course of this conversation, the things that came up were about APS's heavy reliance, in a lot of cases, on parent volunteers to do the legwork of translation and support for these families. That's a model that while laudable from a community volunteer perspective, isn't really sustainable. And I think that it means that the school system ends up abrogating its responsibility now to provide services that actually in the Department of Justice settlement, if you go back and look at it a couple of years ago, we are supposed to be providing really expansive translation and interpretation services and that's not happening. We're not always hitting the mark by making sure that those services are available connection with things like IEP meetings for students with disabilities and their families. So there is just, there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done, I think, in making sure that number one, those information is available in languages that those families need and number two, that we're using the communication mechanisms that they favor. So we know that they're not communicating many of these families by email, for example. So we should be doing a lot more on WhatsApp. We should be doing things like town hall meetings and things, in fact, like school board hours in multiple languages out in the community, rather than expecting the community to come to us at places like the SciFacts Center or even the public library. So I think the community outreach strategies that I've seen in other communities have been much more creative in terms of going to places where these families feel safe and where they have a connection and those can be things like churches or food pantries or lots of other sites where they are already feeling connected.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mary. Michael asks, "What do you think is the greatest challenge facing APS regarding special education?"
The special education system, when you look at the most recent program evaluation for students with disabilities, I think the greatest single challenge is consistency across all schools in the county. And I think on paper, you see the right ingredients in place. We have a tiered system of support for intervention, early intervention. We have protocols in place, some of them local and some of them federal, for identifying students with disabilities and how IEPs are supposed to be written and how progress is supposed to be monitored and how families are supposed to be engaged. Those, on paper, those things exist, but they are not being implemented with fidelity at every school across the county. In some places, monitoring is falling short where there's not timely communication among staff and with families about progress against goals. In other places, Arlington Tiered System of Supports is an example where in some schools, that intervention team meets monthly and in other places, they meet once or twice a year. And we have to standardize that across all of our schools and hold school leaders and central office staff accountable for that consistent implementation so that parents at one school aren't having to understand and navigate a very different system and practice than their colleagues or their parents in another school setting.
Great, thank you. Lynn asks or says, states that SOL scores seem to be way down and this is especially true for ELL students. I've always, English language learning, and when I grew up and I went to Arlington Public Schools, my group was ESL, but I think, thank you, and I think it's ELL now, so thank you. What are your views on trying to best fix this?
Yeah, so I'll just say a word about SOLs generally and then I'll talk about ELs. So SOLs, over the past year, when we look at the data, we see a decline in reading somewhat. We see a bigger and more concerning decline in math SOL scores over the year and a half of our COVID and remote learning time. When I looked at that, I got interested in what I would see when I looked at other school districts. Was this something that was just happening in Arlington or is this a broader phenomenon? And when I look at the state website and look at state data, I'm seeing that across the board in all of the school districts in our area that this drop in math happened and that it's super concerning. The drop in Arlington is by about 20 points on average. The drop in someplace even next door in Alexandria, it's actually a 30-point drop of the average math SOL score. So there's, that's a flag that we have quite a bit of work to do to strengthen math instruction for our students. When you break those out and you look at specific subgroups like students with disabilities where you can break out by the race or ethnicity of students or by English learner status, we see that English learner scores went down even more significantly. And that's really concerning to me because the English learner scores on average, even before the pandemic, were way lower than we need for them to be. So the way that that plays out is we see chronic absenteeism in high schools for some of our English language learners at more beginning levels of English. Their absentee rate is about 50% on average. We look at the four-year graduation rate and dropout rate of that population and it's super, super concerning. I think the steps that we need to take to deal with that are that we need to staff our English learner program appropriately at the school and central office levels. We need to make sure that we are not dumbing down our curriculum for those folks. So a 17-year-old English language learner should not be looking at flashcards of foreign animals. So we want to challenge them and engage them in the same way that other students are. I think I just ran out of time. Sorry.
Yes, thanks, Mary. Mary, one question that actually occurred to me as you were speaking and I promise I'm not trying to put you on the spot and you may not know this answer because I'm getting a little too in the weeds, but you were citing some of the test scores and the SOLs. Do you happen to know what that scale is with the SOLs? It's been a long time since I've taken them, just so we all in the audience have some context for what that is. Do you happen to know that?
Yeah, so the SOL scores are reported out. This is a state-developed test, as I think you guys know, the standards of learning. And they're reported out in basically sort of their two chunks. And there's one that is a pass rate and then there's another rate that is a score that's higher that is the threshold for something called proficiency. So for the purposes of accreditation, every school in the Commonwealth, every public school has to have a certain percentage of its students hit the pass rate. And that's so when school administrators are prepping for the SOLs, they're really thinking about, on average, I have to get a certain number of my students, certain percentage to get to the pass rate in each test, English, math, sometimes social studies, science, depends on the grade level, what tests they take. And then there are more specific targets identified by subgroup. So in school improvement plans, there's typically a pass rate, a target for improvement or growth, what they call adequate yearly progress for English learner students and students with disabilities and some other subgroups like that. And so we are not, we are not hitting what the state benchmark is, what the state has pledged to the federal government that it wants to hit as a state average. We're not there statewide. Arlington, we do a little bit better than some of our surrounding jurisdictions, but that's still not a reason to kind of rest on our laurels, particularly when we look at groups like our English learners, like we just talked about.
Great, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that. Greg asks, "What can the school system do to work against systemic racism and the unfair disparate treatment of students that you referenced?"
Yeah, I think when I look at our equity issues in Arlington, that plays out in a number of ways, right? It plays out in achievement on standardized tests. It plays out in discipline. It plays out in access to honors courses. It plays out in who is identified as students with disabilities. So we see, we see things that should cause us concern in a number of areas. I think the keys to me about this are, I think that we have to be really serious, number one, about choosing curriculum that's research-based and is proven effective. We could talk for a long time tonight about literacy and what's happened with literacy specifically over the past several years in instruction in Arlington, but I think we've rated that course and we're on, on a good path at this point, I am hopeful. So it's research-based curriculum. It's inclusive curriculum. We have data that suggests, for example, for our Black students in Arlington, in the most recent survey data that we have, only 35% of them said that they see their own culture and history reflected in their curriculum. And that's a problem in terms of wanting to engage students and make them feel, feel included and curious about what they're learning. And then I think school culture is a really big, a big determinant. And so creating a space where students feel safe from incidents of racism, where they feel valued, where they feel seen for their strengths and not just labeled according to deficit, goes a long way towards helping students feel invested in, in school. And too often, like social-emotional learning and school culture is put over to the side, but it really is foundational for academic achievement. And so it really needs to be thought of holistically.
Great, thank you. So this time always goes incredibly fast. I always notice that. So, I, let's see. I'm trying to, I'm trying to see if I can pick a question. Can we, would you mind if I give you a question with one minute so that we can squeeze one more in?
Absolutely. And if anyone has additional questions that I didn't answer, you can feel free to email me, which is mary@maryforschoolboard.org and I'm happy to follow up with you individually.
Perfect. And when we're done, if you would like to stick, I think you can stick that in the chat box possibly and then anybody in our audience can get to it. All right, so I'll give you one minute on this one. The school, about a school auditor. The School Board Audits Committee, the School Boards Audit Committee, unlike the County Boards Audit Committee, has no public or community members. Do you believe the schools audit committee should have members from the public? What other recommendations would you have to make the schools audit committee more transparent and accountable?
The answer unequivocally is yes, there should be public citizen representation on the audit committee. I think my other, my other thing, which I've said for a long time, is that on the front end, before auditing even happens, there's a tremendous wealth of community expertise on things like the Budget Advisory Council and all the other advisory councils. And they are not getting leveraged to their full capacity and we could be a much stronger school system if, if we had the benefit of their volunteer expertise.
Great, thank you. All right, Mary, I'm going to give you two minutes here. If you'd like to go ahead and make your closing remarks and then that'll conclude our School Board Forum.
Thank you. I just, I want to thank all of you again for your attendance tonight. This is a really big crowd and it's exciting. It's exciting as we head into fall to get back into the swing of things campaign-wise. I just want to say to you that those of you who don't know me very well or who, who weren't connected real closely last spring during the earlier campaign season, if you don't know me very well, I hope that what you'll appreciate about me is that I am, I live and breathe for public education. This really has been my life's work. I care deeply about the mission of public education. I care deeply about making sure that every student in our system succeeds. I care really deeply about making sure that families have a real voice in how our schools are run because I think that they can be true partners and I don't think that they've been engaged in that way to date. And I value things like honesty and transparency. So I've been calling for things like records, public records of school board votes. I've been calling for things like a dashboard of progress against the measures that APS has set out in its strategic plan. I've been calling for changes in things like the way community engagement happens around boundary changes and budget development. I think all of these are ways that our, our community can collaborate in a more open and transparent and powerful way. I'm excited to bring those ideas to the School Board. I visit, I have visited in my career, a lot of different schools across the country and I've seen things that just light me up inside where you get this feeling when you're in a school where the students and the staff and the family members have worked together to create a great place. And I think that that can happen for us in Arlington. And so I'm excited to bring some fresh thinking to the School Board and share my ideas with, with fellow School Board members and with the district leadership. So I welcome the opportunity to do so and I welcome your questions now or any time between now and Election Day and I hope I have your vote.
Perfect timing. Wonderful. Thank you, Mary, so much. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We appreciate having you. A reminder to everyone, please make sure that you do vote in the upcoming School Board election. Mary is running against Major Mike Webb. Unfortunately, we did not receive an RSVP from him to be able to speak with us tonight, but we do have two candidates on the ballot for School Board. We are going to go ahead and transition now to our County Board candidates. Our candidates are vying for a four-year term. A reminder that we are featuring Takis Karantonis, who is a Democrat and is the incumbent. And then we have Mike Cantwell, who is an independent, Audrey Clement, who is also an independent, and Theo, Adam Theo. And then we have Mike Cantwell, who is an independent, Audrey Clement, who is also an independent, and Theo, Adam Theo. Who is also an independent. You will hear me refer to him as Theo rather than Adam, but Adam Theo is an independent here. I did share the rules early in the program. Our candidates have received them in advance, so I'm just going to skip right past that and go right in. We did do a random drawing before the program to do the order for the opening statements. The order is going to be Audrey and then Theo and then Takis and then Mike. Again, Audrey, Theo, Takis, Mike. So invite our county board candidates to go ahead and turn their cameras on. And same thing that I said to Mary, y'all, I am, you will. You may be able to hear through my computer the timer go off, but I'm also going to cut you off. You can certainly finish your sentence, but please leave it at that. Audrey, all you for three minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much for inviting me to this forum. I'm Audrey Clement, an independent candidate for Arlington County Board. As a 17 year Westover resident, longtime civic activist and past member of the Transportation Commission. I'm running for county board because it has pushed harmful policies. Resulting in overcrowded schools, gentrification, loss of green space. And a 10 year average annual effective tax rate increase that is more than double the rate of inflation. The pandemic has challenged residents' abilities to make ends meet with many businesses shuttered and people out of work or facing eviction. In response, other northern Virginia jurisdictions. Have reduced their tax rates. Not so Arlington County Board, which adopted a tax rate increase this year. That increased the effective real estate tax rate by 6%. Another board priority that I oppose is its push for so-called missing middle housing. Multi-family dwellings and single family home neighborhoods. Contrary to what the county set, county has said, missing middle is a euphemism for upzoning that will not make housing more affordable. Instead, it will inflate land values, resulting in higher housing prices, overcrowded schools, more traffic congestion, loss of tree canopy. Increased runoff and more air pollution. The county under Takis' leadership has packaged upzoning as the solution to racial inequality. Despite the fact that few minorities will qualify for mortgages on upzoned lots. Finally, while I agree with the police reforms recently adopted by the General Assembly, I oppose symbolic gestures. The fact that Lee Highway has a new name and the county will soon have a new logo. Means nothing to people of color facing inferior employment, housing or educational opportunities. Changing the name of WNL High School in 2019 did not close the minority student achievement gap. In fact, it helped to hide the dirty little secret. That the county was investigated by the Justice Department in 2018 for discriminating against English language learners. If elected, I pledge to seek immediate tax relief for residents and businesses. Say yes to affordable housing and no to missing middle upzoning. Preserve Arlington's cultural heritage. Stop permitting the destruction of historic structures like the Rouse Estate that was demolished in March. Save our parks, streams and tree canopy. Stop clear cutting wooded areas along Potomac tributaries in the name of stream bed restoration. Say yes to real social justice reforms and no to symbolic gestures. If you share my agenda, then spread the word about my candidacy, donate to my campaign and help make the Arlington Way more than an MP bridge.
All right. Thank you, Audrey. We're going to go on to Theo. Theo, you've got three minutes on the clock.
Thank you very much. Thank you for, thank you to the committee of 100. I'm Theo. Most of you don't know me, so I'll take this time to introduce myself. I'm 42 years young, living in Boston, eight year resident of Arlington. For the past nine years, I've been a communications consultant within the Department of Homeland Security. Working alongside police officers, firefighters and other first responders from across the country. I'm also a nine year veteran of the Air Force Reserves. As a structural civil engineer, doing things like carpentry, welding, masonry, and even a little bit of plumbing. I deployed to Eastern Afghanistan in 2011. I am currently also serving as a secretary of Boston Virginia Square Civic Association and I'm a voting delegate to the Civic Federation. I'm also a chair, I'm also the chair of the Libertarian Party of Northern Virginia since 2018, where I've helped triple the number of active volunteers. Established dedicated communications, policy and community service programs and expanded the organization into Loudoun County. I worry about Arlington's long-term sustainability and prosperity. We need to be focusing on housing affordability. Public safety, transit, climate change, and helping our small businesses recover from the effects of the pandemic. Under one party governance. With five board members that are all cookie cutter versions of each other with the same messaging, the same ideas, the same. Status quo solutions. Our county government has become slow, unresponsive and failed to take action on so many critical issues. Instead, our leaders focus on luxury amenities such as the aquatic center and a boathouse in Roslyn. They overdesigned schools using world famous architect, architects. But they, but they don't meet ADA requirements. They have aimless direction on capital improvement projects like the Career Center and Safer Streets with Vision Zero. They just run up debt, raise taxes and increase fees. Some of these issues can be fixed with greater government transparency, fully funding the county auditor. And establish and election reform with ranked choice voting. But the only real way to get these changes and properly focus Arlington County's leadership is with an independent on the board. We've seen that's the only way they pay attention. I'll be spending the next two years of my life to make sure this happens. This year, I'm establishing a campaign, campaign organization, website with policy positions up and running and introduced myself to voters. With the intent on taking a seat on the county board in 2022 or 23. I'm looking forward to the debate, talking about the many challenges we face in the community and my solutions for them. Meeting with all residents of Arlington over the next two months and two years. And sharing my many, many frustrations with Takis, Matt DeFrante and the others on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Theo. To our audience, I do want to remind you about the Q and A box at the bottom. One point of clarification I want to give, you may see a chat and a Q and A at the bottom. We are using the Q and A box. I think we have actually disabled the chat because that's not how we accept our Q and A. So please make sure to submit via the Q and A. We already have a, a couple coming in there. All right, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Takis. You do have three minutes on the clock.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the committee and John Vikes, that in particular, for being once again a convener. I'm Dax Karantonis. I'm a current member of the Arlington County Board and I'm running for reelection because I love Arlington and I want to shape our future. 15 years ago, my wife Lea and I, we chose Arlington to put down roots. Since then, we haven't stopped building relationships and. With our neighborhood, our community, our civic organizations. Our local businesses. And in the last year of the county board, I saw these connections growing even closer. I want to make Arlington a place where everybody can thrive and where nobody's left behind. COVID and our national reckoning on systemic racism revealed inequalities. And tested our values, but could not derail us. I believe that we are a successful community when we care for the health and safety of all. When we care for economic resilience, for small businesses and working families. When we care for social and racial justice and fairness on all levels, from policing to housing to education to access to natural resources. We are a successful community, with other words, when we work together. And this year we did, in ways never seen before. I saw how Arlingtonians helped their neighbors to make it through the most difficult times in generations. And in this spirit, last year I hit the ground running after the special election. Along with my colleagues and our community, I jumped right in the COVID response. I worked so that we could fund the needs of our public schools. I listened to the dialogues on race here at home and how we have to enable and empower our community to overcome inequalities and to build equity. I focused on accelerating Arlington's climate response, including investing in stormwater management, the preservation of nature and tree canopy restoration. I will continue to work to offer more housing options for people who, like myself, want to call Arlington home. I believe in building Arlington from its middle class out. Therefore, I voted to restore public employees' collective bargaining rights. And made sure that public contractors also pay fair wages. Last year, I promised to start a micro loan fund for small businesses and now it's in the budget guidance and very soon on the board's docket. My here in office was Arlington values in action. These are my values. And I'm running for reelection because I'm passionate for a local government that embodies these values. I'm proud that all my colleagues on the board have endorsed me. Although we differ in our opinions. We have Arlington in common and this is why we work as a team among us and together with our community. I really hope to earn your vote as what I am. I'm an immigrant, I'm a planner, I'm an economist, I'm a community activist. And yes, I'm also sitting board member and always. Always your neighbor. So I'm looking forward to the discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Takis. All right. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike Cantwell.
Thank you, Hannah, and the Arlington Committee of 100. My name is Mike Cantwell and I'm running as an independent for the Arlington County Board. Before I begin my remarks, I'd like to honor the Arlingtonians who were killed or wounded at the Pentagon nearly 20 years ago. I'd also like to recognize the members of the Arlington County Fire Department. The Arlington County Police Department and the other first responders who saved countless lives on that horrible day. I am a 28 year resident of Arlington County and currently live with my wife and three children in the Yorktown community. I've led a lifetime of service, first as a naval officer and now as a community leader and a political reform activist. My professional experience includes strategic planning, project management, leadership and innovation. In addition to my bachelor's degree from the United States Naval Academy. I also have a MBA from George Washington University and a master's degree from the Naval War College. After I'm elected in November, I will bring an independent voice to the county board. Focus on core services, curb rapid urbanization, support small businesses by lowering taxes. And advocate for the expanding the county auditor's office. The COVID-19 pandemic hit the Arlington business community especially hard. The Arlington County government and the business community must renew their commitment to attracting visitors. And reducing office and hotel vacancy rates. The county board must create a culture of frugality and innovation. And reduce the tax burden on businesses and homeowners. Unlike current county board members. I will hold the county board accountable for the commitments they made in the open space and urban forest master plans. I will resist effort, efforts to upzone residential neighborhoods. While supporting smart growth policies and practices along major transit corridors. As a longtime president of the Yorktown Civic Association, I'm uniquely qualified to join the county board. None of the other candidates come close to my level of civic engagement. My experience in the schools, committees, churches and on the sports fields. As I talk to voters, the most common thing I hear is, thank you for running. I also hear about their frustration with the county board and how they feel like they're being talked at, not listened to. Thank you for inviting me to tonight's candidate forum. I look forward to your questions.
Great, thank you, Mike. All right, we are going to go ahead and turn to the Q and A from the audience here. A reminder that for questions from the audience that are geared, that are targeted towards the full. Group, they will each have. Two minutes, just double, yeah, sorry, two minutes to respond. We're going to go in kind of a rotating order for the questions so that we can be fair there. If there is a question directed at a particular candidate, we will do one minute for everyone. And then I will keep an eye, if one of the candidates references another, I'm going to try to give the referenced candidate. And many, in most occasions, the opportunity to respond. So let me pull up, excuse me, just one sec, I have my question pulled up. Okay, Deborah kicks it off with a good one. What do you see as the most important issue facing Arlington today? So I am going to start with Theo and you have two minutes.
Well, the most important issue facing Arlington today is despite COVID. Probably still the same issue facing us before COVID. That is housing affordability and general affordability of county. That is, poses the problem of pricing out so many residents, especially elderly, low income, immigrant, disabled people. Who are clinging on to living here in this county as it is already. Housing affordability is an issue that the current county board has failed to take seriously. Of course, they talk about affordable housing. They talk about building more housing. There's always the ribbon cutting and the photo op of some new development. That they love to, to position themselves for. But the number of houses, of units that are being built in this county is horrifyingly low. I understand that Mike and Audrey, they don't see the benefits of missing middle housing. But it is critical for us to actually develop. Housing for the middle class. And that is what missing middle is. Missing middle is housing for the middle class. We need that in order to become and remain a sustainable, viable, prosperous county. Unlike Takis, I'll actually do something about it. Takis hasn't taken the county board in any new direction on the issue. He talks a lot. He has a lot of great things to say about missing middle housing and affordable housing. But he hasn't pushed the county board or the county leadership in any new direction. Nothing significant to undo the damage that we've already done, the hole that we're already in. So housing affordability is our number one issue going forward and it's been that way. And unfortunately. Unless things change, it will continue to be that way.
Takis?
Thank you for the question. You will hear it from me too. Except for COVID, which is the immediate, the immediate challenge right now, housing affordability is the number one challenge. Very, very high in the priority list. And it has been, for me. A very important issue in my civic career before it began, it became a political career. I've been a housing activist. From day one, I was in Arlington because I came to this community with my wife. And the first thing that we experienced was not being able to find housing in Arlington to begin with, not to have choices. So Arlington is a, is a community that looks back to a, to a solid record of planning carefully. Of planning carefully for housing, of matching development with assets like transportation, like schools, like natural resources. We need to bundle all these to support. The creation of new housing, of housing choices. Displacement is a real thing. Displacement is also a real killer of our community. I've seen, I live on, along Columbia Pike. I've seen how over the last two decades, we have been losing. Market rate affordable housing at staggering, staggering pace. And I've seen how, now that I am in government, I've seen how difficult and expensive it is to replace. And follow up and try to, to substitute this with, with committed affordable housing. My commitment is very firm. Supporting the Affordable Housing Investment Fund. We spend already, we invested already $300 million, more than that actually. To, to be successful in Arlington, this is to. I am, I'm going to continue investing in transportation and in our school system so that we keep our neighbors here.
Hi, thank you, Takis. Mike?
Thank you for that question. I really appreciate that. I, I think the biggest problem facing Arlington right now are. Runaway spending and runaway taxes. We also lack accountability in, in the county government. And I think a lot of that stems from the lack of political competition. More competition will equal, equal better outcomes. We see the same thing in economics. We see the same things. Even in that, in the natural world where you have more competition, you have better outcomes. I'd like to address a few of the other issues, some of the other candidates brought up. I'm, I'm for affordable housing. I'm, I'm, I question the, the outcomes of $300 million spent on. Government-run affordable housing programs. We have affordable housing in Arlington. It is private sector affordable housing. It's in some of our most. Transient, difficult communities, some of the historical black neighborhoods where. Four generations of Arlingtonians have lived in the same community. But now their taxes are going up and they are having to leave Arlington because of that. Also, I think most Arlingtonians. Are interested in finding a. are interested in finding a market-rate affordable housing place to live, but not that many are interested in being part of a government-run affordable housing program where you have to submit your last year's tax return, your last two W2s, you have to go through a list of, of bureaucracy in order to, to get a place to live. So we absolutely need more market-rate affordable housing. I'm skeptical about introduce spending millions and millions of dollars more on affordable housing programs that don't work. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Audrey?
Yes, I agree with the others that Arlington County's push for upzoning of single-family homes in residential neighborhoods, also known as missing middle, as the way to increase housing supply is our most serious problem. Missing middle upzoning will produce more housing, to be sure, but that housing will not be affordable to current residents of modern income and traditionally black neighborhoods. Instead, many of them will be forced to sell as developers bid up the price and assessed value of their properties. Consider that a recent teardown in the Highview Park neighborhood, which was priced at $600,000 in 2018, was replaced by a duplex with units priced at about $1.2 million each. At Towns at 24th and Green Valley, the starting price of each of the eight new townhomes under construction is $800,000, which is $125,000 more than the assessed value of each of the two homes they will replace. Not only will missing little upzoning force moderate-income people out of their homes, it will also degrade the environment by eliminating tree canopy and increasing runoff traffic congestion and school overcrowding. Some missing middle proponents ignore its negative social and environmental impacts because it will net more tax revenue. Yet, according to Wharton economist John Huntley, the increase in tax revenue at Towns at 24th will be offset by the increased cost in county-provided services, resulting in a net fiscal loss over 10 years. Instead of serving as a cash cow, upzoning could bankrupt the county. A far better solution to the housing, to housing demand is to repurpose unrented luxury units in the R and B quarter to moderate-income housing. And as final proof that upzoning will not promote racial equity, a recent paper published by, is it N Y Times?
Time. Thanks, Audrey. One thing I want to share with the audience, because I share this some months, and sometimes I leave it out. In terms of the Q and A, we have a condensed time where we can't answer all the questions, and I want to let, make sure you know which questions I prioritize. We have a big focus here on asking questions in the form of a question, especially if you've seen us in person. We are especially adamant on emphasizing that. So generally, you are not, if you ask your question very concisely and without commentary, it is much more likely to be one that I read out to the group. We're really looking for the county board candidates to give our feedback, and we generally are not bringing in feedback from the audience because we do want the county board candidates to be answering from their perspective. So I just see some of those questions coming in, and I want to make sure to clarify that. So questions in the form of a question, please. Let me see, I'm sorry, I just had one right in front of me and I pulled it away. Okay, we have multiple questions that are about process in terms of election, specifically about ranked choice voting, about your, if you're in support of ranked choice voting, if it's something you'd like to see in the future. So I'm going to ask each of y'all to speak to that. We have, I'm just double checking, we have Takas going first this round.
Thank you. Let me first say, I'm on the record of supporting ranked choice voting for local elections. I think this is something that not only me, but some of my colleagues as well have committed to research. The, the Electoral Board has already started working on this. They even run a mock election this summer, and they will be reporting to the county board on the, on the many and, you know, complicated practicalities of ranked choice voting. I do think that while in Arlington, we don't really have the, thankfully, we don't really have the usual reasons that are behind the choice for ranked choice voting. We don't have this extreme polarization in our politics. We are a very civic town. We really talk to each other. We come together. We have a lot of, a lot of things that unites us and we find consensus. Still, I think this is a, you know, great improvement in democracy, and especially after January 6th. And after what we've seen just here across the river, it is important to, you know, rethink and take the opportunity to look closer at what we can improve in, in representation and in our electoral system. So that's, that's my answer to this. Thank you.
All right. Mike?
Earlier in my remarks, I mentioned that I'm a political reform activist. I, I was extremely motivated after the 2016 election to get involved in political reform. I truly believed that the biggest threat to our nation's security is our political dysfunction. As we've seen in the last five years, things have only gotten worse. Instead of just talking about political reform or posting things on, on social media, I took action and joined an organization called Unite America. Unite America is a political reform organization that originally was focused on helping independent candidates get elected to office. It is, it has since shifted its focus to a more broader array of political reform activities. In 2019, I became the Vice President of Fair Vote Virginia. The, the sole goal of this single-issue advocacy organization was to bring ranked choice voting to Virginia. Since that time, I've, I've spent a lot of my free time promoting this cause of ranked choice voting in Virginia. I went to Richmond in, in February of 2020 and lobbied to bring ranked choice voting to Virginia. At that time, to the surprise of many, the legislature passed bills 506 and 1103, which allowed ranked choice voting in Virginia and the rest of Virginia. The, the 506 bill was focused only on Arlington, and it passed, and Arlington was allowed to begin ranked choice voting in July of 2020. Since that time, they've taken very little action to implement that new law. I'm a huge supporter of ranked choice voting, and I also helped, as a member of the Board of the Civic Federation, I helped stand up the Task Force for Governance and Political Reform. That organization is now seeing fruit and implementing ranked choice voting in Arlington. Thank you.
Audrey?
Well, I certainly support ranked choice voting. I think that if and when it is implemented in Arlington, it's going to open a lot of eyes about where, how much support third-party, independent candidates and third-party candidates like myself actually have. Furthermore, I want to point out that years ago, when I was an active member of the National Green Party, which I am no longer, I was a, a member of their Ballot Access Committee, and I was at, I was actively involved in tabulating RCB elections. So I not only support it in a material, in a political sense, but I also understand the mechanics of ranked choice voting. Now, a number of, at least one of my friends is reluctant to support RCB for two reasons. Number one, she doesn't believe that it will solve the fundamental political problems in Arlington County, and I happen to agree with her in the sense that what we really need here is a district form of government, and we need multi-party representation across the state. However, RCB will enable people to register support for candidates that they know are unlikely to win. And that in turn might enable these candidates to win in future elections. And the other objection that has been raised, RCB, is that, well, gee, in the recent election in New York City that was RCB, a lot of people who were ignorant of it, who were not aware of, of its power, or were not educated on it, I guess is a better word, simply cast one vote. They did not cast, they did not rank choice all their candidates. And in that sense, their votes lost weight. Okay.
Thanks, Audrey. Theo?
Yeah, well, it seems that all of us here are fans of ranked choice voting. That's a very good sign. Now, one difference between us challenger independents and Takas is that we haven't been in office for the past year and a half to actually move it along. Takas says that he is a favor, or is a fan of ranked choice voting, but in the past year and a half now, has not done anything to move it along. Some of the things that could have been done, just even small-level things, we're recently wrapping up a new logo process for the county. It would have been awesome to have this process of picking out a new logo for Arlington County to be determined by ranked choice voting. That would have been a great opportunity to help educate the public. As it is, here we are waiting for committees and other things to proceed and provide results to the county board, but then the county board is slow-walking and taking their sweet time with it. I mean, they're going to, I fear that they're going to water down any recommendations from the Civic Federation's Tiger Team, just like they watered down the Police Practices Group and other things that come their way. So although we're all fans, I have a lot of skepticism for the current county board's actual real willingness to push forward the reforms. After all, they've got to realize that it puts their own positions, their own jobs in jeopardy. No one would really do that, would they? With the missed opportunities for the new logo in educating our people, our public, there are some other great resources that I urge everyone who's tuning in to check out. Mike, kudos to him. He's been involved with Fair Vote Virginia. That is an excellent organization to start the process of learning about ranked choice voting. There are many others. The name escapes me, but there's a great one just across the river in DC. All of these, check out, please. Educate on ranked choice voting. It is a fun system. Thank you.
Thank you. Takas, I'm, you were mentioned, so I'm going to give you one minute to respond to the, the comments regarding you.
Thank you. It will take less than one minute. I voted to fund the, the path to ranked choice voting, to to fund the request of the Register to bring in the technology, understand the system, get the algorithm clear, and to, to have a system that is certified and ready for, for implementation. And this is an ongoing process, and you will see very, very soon in the next couple of board meetings reporting out on, on this and lining up this for action. So not only am I on the record of being for ranked choice voting, I actually acted on that. I put money where my mouth is.
All right. Thank you, Takas. We have a couple of different questions about sustainability, and I'm going to pick one of them here. They are, they kind of run along a similar thread. So in 2019, the county board adopted a sweeping update to the Community Energy Plan, and it puts Arlington on a path to be carbon-neutral by 2050. Are those goals realistic? What additional steps would be necessary to get us to that goal? And how painful might it be to the community? So those are a couple of questions. I, I, I think they all run along the same way, that, along the same question. I'm gonna, it's gonna start with Mike.
Yeah, if I was on the county board, there are a few steps that I would advocate for. A few are, are, are simple, but I am advocating for Arlington County school buses to start using public transit for high school students. I actually, American Dara mentioned that in her remarks. I actually presented that, that proposal to the superintendent over a decade ago, and there, there are emails to, to show that. I think that would be one way to increase the use of public transit and also to teach our next generation about the benefits of public transit. I myself am an avid cyclist. I, I cycle over 20 miles a, a week, and also living where I do in the Yorktown community. I frequently walk to restaurants and other services within my community. As for the, the county, I think they should look at everything that they do and look at it through a lens of how can they reduce emissions in the future? And then one of my key priorities is to expand the, the county auditor's office. Part of that reasoning for the county auditor's office is to see if the money that they spend is actually resulting in the, the outcomes that they desire. There are many programs and projects within Arlington that sound good, but they don't actually produce the result they, they are looking at. And finally, I, I have noticed that much, many, there are many county vehicles going, riding around Arlington. Most of them are one, two, or three years old. I, all my cars are, are currently over 12 years old. I don't understand why the county staff has these very new cars, and also why aren't they using public transit to get around the county? Thank you.
Audrey, two minutes.
Okay, so in 2019, Arlington County updated its Community Energy Plan, the CEP, mandating net-zero carbon emissions by 2050. While I support this ambitious goal, it is prescriptive rather than pragmatic. For example, one of the charts in the CEP indicates the county plans to achieve net-zero energy through reduction, elimination of fossil-generated electricity, increased reliance on renewable energy, more energy-efficient buildings, and EV transportation initiatives, that's electric vehicles. All of these goals are arguably achievable. However, there's another category in the CEP that posits a reduction of 1 million metric tons of carbon equivalents between 2030 and 2050 through, quote, "future opportunities to achieve carbon neutrality," end of quote. This is purely aspirational and has no place in a concrete plan. According to Blue Virginia, which critique the CEP, Arlington gets virtually all of its energy from two sources, Virginia Dominion Power and Washington Gas, neither of which is committed to renewable energy on a scale that would make the CEP more than a pipe dream. That's because the state of Virginia lacks a mandatory renewable energy portfolio standard, which would incentivize Dominion to produce large-scale renewable energy. It also denies localities the right to enter into renewable energy power purchase agreements that would enable them to circumvent Dominion and its commitment to natural gas-generated electricity. If elected, I will stop misleading the public about the potential for net-zero carbon emissions by 2050. Rather, I will lobby the legislature to adopt a mandatory renewable energy portfolio standard and authorize municipalities to enter into power purchases with third parties.
Thank you, Audrey. I'm going to go on to, we are on Theo.
Yeah, unfortunately, the goals that were set out by the county board for 2050 are very likely unrealistic. As Audrey mentioned, they're kind of prescriptive. I mean, they just, they're setting a goal without really sitting down and trying to figure out how to obtain those goals. That's pretty typical, it seems, of the county board. There are things that can be done and should be done to fight climate change, improve our environment, and switch over to solar renewable energies. But unfortunately, a press release and some motion by the county board just isn't doing it. So to the original question of whether that specific item from the county board by 2050 is realistic, probably not, unfortunately. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't be still pushing for school buses and art buses to switch over to fully electric as quickly as possible. There was recently a grant from the state. I'm usually not a big fan of grants from state or federal governments because they're treated like, you know, candy. They, they're just consumed, and then the local government doesn't really think about how to sustain that going forward. But there was recently a grant that got us three new buses that are all electric. Great. We also have a solar program that I'm a big fan of, CPACE, I think it is. It was recently stood up and just had its first success with Rockland's Barbecue up here near where I live. It's basically a program which matches private funders with businesses that want to install solar panels on their roofs. That's a great way for the county to get involved without spending taxpayer funds or adding regulations or anything like that. Just be a matchmaker between private funds and businesses that want to install solar panels. There's also the Arlington Amazon Solar Farm down in Pennsylvania County, which is good. It's going to eventually cover what about 83% of the solar power need or the energy needs for the county's buildings? Things like that is what can be done to flight to fight climate change, not some press release and little statement from the county board. Thank you for running.
Yeah, you took some liberties. I was trying to let you finish the sentence.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Tocas, two minutes.
Thank you. This is a very important question. Facing and making Arlington resilient and responding to a climate emergency is an absolute priority. And I I I think that if 2020 was the year where we saw vulnerabilities from COVID, that 2021 is definitely the year where we collectively as a nation, actually, and even across the globe, we see our vulnerabilities from rapid climate change, far faster than we ever anticipated. So right now, to answer your question directly, I don't think that we are in a place where we will be achieving the Kyoto goal of 2050, of carbon neutrality 2050. We have to do a lot of work to get there. First and foremost, I do support the community energy plan. We're talking about the implementation framework at this moment. And there I have a few remarks. First of all, for me, it's very important from a point of view of governance to make it a whole government, whole government action item. So all departments have to report on how they they achieve the goals of this of this plan. Secondly, I do believe that all all new construction, all all building scenarios should be benchmarked and we should ask them to actually be compliant with a goal in in reasonable time horizon. For me, this is extremely important. It's very frustrating, side one after side one, to have to extract these benefits from from developers with, you know, with a pace that I am not very satisfied for. I am fighting for that though. Third, I do believe that, you know, we have a lot of of ground to full electrification, transportation, but also making sure that we make, we we do what we do best. We do smart growth because smart growth is extremely efficient and it's a valid climate change response policy because it lowers the carbon emission time.
Thank you. All right, I, we are at 8:13. I am going to go ahead and go to our closing statements. I wish we could squeeze in one or two more questions, but I am very committed to not running over. So we're gonna go ahead and go to the closing statements. We're gonna go in the opposite order of the opening statements. So we're gonna start with Mike Cantwell. A reminder that you will each have two minutes for your closing statements. Mike.
Arlington needs new leadership on the county board. We need county board members who are unbeholden to political parties or special interests. And we need county board members who listen, really listen to their constituents. We need county board members who are committed to spending less and reducing the tax burden on small businesses and homeowners. As a civic association president, I wake up every day and say to myself, how can I help the residents of the Arlington community? How can I make the streets safer for pedestrians, cyclists and motorists? What can I do to save trees and prevent the next stormwater disaster? Now I'm asking for your help. Help me to bring my skills and years of experience to the county board. Please visit Cantwell for County Board. Join the join the Cantwell for County Board team, host a meet and greet event, organize a walk through your neighborhood or donate. Every dollar helps. Thank you, Hannah, and the committee of 100.
Thanks, Mike. One thing I'll say to the candidates as we, and I'll say to our audience as we conclude our, once we finish the closing remarks, if you would like to put a link to your website and a contact email, you are welcome to do that in the chat and that will go to the audience. I'm gonna ask you to please wait to put that into the chat until everybody has finished their concluding remarks. So it's not a distraction to our audience. All right, Tocas, you are next. You're muted, Tocas. I'm gonna start you over on your time. Ready, go.
Okay, again, so thank you. At the beginning of this conversation, I said that I love Arlington and that I want to make this a place where everybody can thrive and where nobody is left behind. I said that I believe that we are a successful community when we work together and that I have a very personal view of what this means because for many years, I've been a street level community activists who led the Columbia Pike Revitalization Organization, Echo Action Arlington, the Alliance for Housing Solutions and chaired my civic association. Street level means people level. It means for everything I say, I can actually show the work. And I'm not a fair weather candidate. I ran for office and got elected when tough decisions had to be made. And when it mattered to have experienced responsive, responsible and collaborative leadership. My entire civic and political life, I spent building coalitions to provide lasting solutions that work for all. I said that I'm proud that all my colleagues on the board have endorsed me. These are the people I work with. If you desire that Arlington is an inclusive, fair, responsive, greener community, if you want to live in a forward thinking, caring community that learns from its past and is focused on the future, then we have a lot in common and a lot to work on together. During the last campaign and while in office, I listened very carefully. Arlington told me what they cared about. And if we elected, I will continue to listen and amplify our community's voice on the board table. I bring the experience, the competence and the vision in planning and economic development, in housing, in transportation and environmental sustainability. I have been in the trenches and I have a passion to shape our future. I hope to earn your vote and your support. And again, I want to thank the 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 committee of 100 for this event tonight. This is best Arlington tradition of civism and civic dialogue. Thank you.
Perfect, right on time. Thank you. All right, Theo, you've got two minutes.
Sure. I'll keep this a pretty short and simple. Thank you, first of all, for the community of 100, Hannah and John Beistat for putting this together and running it. It's been a great forum and it's well run as always. It's this lack of diversity, however, on the county board that keeps us from solving our problems in our community. The fact that all five board members are basically, as I said, cookie cutters of each other. They all vote the same way. They have the same ideas, the same solutions, the same speeches and messaging. That right there should tell us, all of us, that everything that we're facing right now with climate change, affordable housing, transit and transportation, safe streets, public safety and health, they're not getting fixed because of this lack of diversity and these lack of actual ideas with real solutions. Instead, it's just five people all doing kumbaya group hugs and getting along splendidly with each other. That's nice, but that doesn't fix our really big problems. The only way to solve this is with an independent on the county board. We can holler and protest as much as we want, but until we have political change within leadership, there isn't going to be a change with our solutions. I could use your help. You can find me over at TheoForArlington.org. Join my email list, email list, follow the social media accounts and donate if you can, even just $25 helps. As I said, I'll be spending the next two years on this. It's not something that I'll be, I'll be, I won't be going away anytime soon. You know, as much as Tocas and Matt and others may wish. So thank you all very much for listening to me and for tuning in. I will definitely be seeing a lot of y'all.
Thank you. Audrey.
Yes, thank you, Hannah, for an excellent forum. I agree with the other compliments that have been extended to you. The choice in this year's county board race is clear. An engaged community leader or a rubber stamp? I'm the former and the incumbent is the latter. This year, Tocas Carantonas rubber stamped a tax package that increased the effective residential real estate tax by 6%. This at a time when many Arlington households are struggling financially due to the pandemic. He also facilitated demolition of the architecturally significant February Lothrop Rouse Estate by joining with the board to delay a hearing on local historic designation for the building and voting to deny historic designation for the site. Now, Tocas is pushing so-called missing middle upzoning of Arlington single family home neighborhoods. In fact, he's a supporter of Alliance for Housing Solutions, AHS, which is leading the charge to densify the county. Tocas and AHS argue that upzoning will promote racial equity by providing housing opportunities for blacks and other minorities, despite an abundance of evidence to the contrary. In fact, a recent rigorous academic study from NYU demonstrated that upzoning in New York City between 2000 and 2007 produced an influx of whites into gentrified neighborhoods, even as the white population of the city itself plummeted. Tocas knows how to go to go along to get along with county board. But what Arlington needs is an elected leader willing to go it alone when the board advocates its responsibilities. If elected to county board, I won't claim credit for rubber stamping done deals. I won't push harmful housing policies and permit destruction of Arlington's cultural heritage. You can turn this situation around. Vote Clement, independent for county board on November 2nd.
Wonderful. Thank you, Audrey. Everyone in the audience, I'm gonna ask you to stay with us for a couple more minutes. Thank you so much to our candidates for being with us here tonight. Mary as well, our county board candidates and Mary for school board. We're glad to have you here. A reminder, if you would like to stick a link to your campaign as well as a contact email address into or either or into the chat box for our audience, please feel free to go ahead and do that at this time. I definitely encourage our audience to do your research into our candidates leading up to the election. Scott, would you please throw that final slide up on the screen? I want to make sure everybody's got the critical dates for the election. Please make sure to take a look at these. Also want to remind everyone to register for our program next month discussing discussing the future of the relationship between Arlington Public Schools and the Arlington County Police Department. Now that there will be no school resource officers, the registration will be in your Zoom chat box in just a moment. So I encourage you to sign up and mark your calendars. The email invitation coming soon will have more details on that. Also want to thank our program committee for coordinating this program, especially John Beistat. He designed the rules, recruited the candidates and more. Shout out to Scott and Timon in the background there are board members who are doing a lot of the logistics behind the scenes. If you see me, look to the side. I am not looking off at other things. I am looking at the communications with Scott and Timon to keep me on track so I can keep all of us and all of our candidates on track. So thank you to our whole board who has been a fantastic support for tonight. If you want to watch the recording for tonight, you can like our Facebook page and there will be the Facebook Live that's been going will then be up there as a recording. We will get the recording up on our website later. I never give a definitive date for when that goes up. We are an all volunteer organization. We get it up as soon as we can. We will see what that is, but it'll be on Facebook right away. So thank you again to our candidates. We are really grateful for your time. We know you have a lot on your plate. You also have a whole circuit of candidate forums that you are going through. We even have some of our, we have an incredibly active, civically active board. So I know we even have some of our own county board members are supporting other candidate forums throughout this season. So everyone, please take note of these dates. Make sure you're engaged. I know there are other elections on the ballot, governor, attorney general, lieutenant governor, some delegates, a few others, but please make sure that, please keep in mind that your local, your local officers are so important and really make a difference in your day to day and in your neighborhood. So without any further ado, I'm gonna go ahead and close this out. We did wrap up a little bit early. I never quite know how this is gonna go. But thank you all for being with us here tonight. Thank you. We're really glad to see you. Here's to a good year with committee of 100. Bye, everyone.